Public hearing to order for the Hammond City Council on October 15, 2013. Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Okay, first item on the public hearing. Number one, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 10-5197, city statute establishing certain requirements for the discharge of wastewater in the city of Hammond. Dr. Sten.
Gary.
Good afternoon.
Please interview the substitute.
Yes, sir.
As he told you last week, old permit required determining metals in concentration units, which basically was micrograms per liter. The new permit requires that we report the metals on a loading basis. The difference between the old permit and the new permit is when you take it, introduce the loading aspect, you put in the flow per day. So basically what you're doing is taking a concentration, multiplying it times a million gallons per day, and you're converting that into English units, which is pounds per day. So that's basically all that's taking place. This is a much more equitable way to assess what the industrial users are sending to the city. The concentration units that we were originally specifying for the industrial users was actually more restrictive than they probably should have been. This is a more equitable and fair way to assess what their impact of what they're sending down playing is important to the process. Any questions?
Do we have any questions?
Dr. Sten, how many users does this affect? I know I asked.
Actually, right now it affects three.
Three.
Okay. And that's based upon how much is sent per month and so forth, as Gary said last week. Right now, we have North Oaks, we have Wind Dicks, the Gill Station, and we have the Dill. Those are the three industrial users.
Any other council question? Do we have any public questions or comments on this item?
I have one more.
No.
Dr. Sten.
Dr. Sten, no more questions.
Does the industrial users have any feedback, positive, negative, either way?
No, we've not heard anything.
No.
And I'm sure, I'm sure they would have, they would have let me know if they weren't saying.
And there would happen.
It's to their benefit. What we have asked, what they're actually doing is really to their benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Number two, an ordinance to authorize the borrowing of funds from the sales tax fund number 203-95,000-590185, in the amount not to exceed $350,000 for the airport control tower project at Hammond North Shore Regional Airport. Mayor Foster.
Thank you very much. We're getting down to the 11th hour, actually getting close to the 12th hour because there's an item on the agenda further down about acceptance of the bids if we're able to secure enough money. And in order to secure enough money, we are going to have to borrow about $350,000. I would ask the council if they would please to turn to tab seven under resolutions, and we have put, I don't think that it's hyperlink, and we have put an overall budget for the air control tower. So wait just a second till, it should be the blue tab. Right?
They're not all blue.
Oh, they're not? Oh, okay. Different colors. Mr. President, do you have any?
Okay.
We're ready, sir.
Just to go over the sources of funding for the tower, we have an FAA grant that we've already received, $800,000. We have approved state capital outlay funding of $750,000. We have done a city match, which was already approved, in the amount of $94,000. We had a general fund appropriation of $14,835, and we have $79,565 currently in the airport fund. And then we have $800 interest on deposits that's due from the city. Total sources of funding that we have at this point in time is $1,739,200. The cost of the project is listed, the costs are listed there. Grant administration, $10,000, this goes back to the state. Consultant services and engineering, $395,353. We did have a $7,050 payment to our former consultant that we had on the project, which was alliance of $7,050. When we took the bids, the construction cost, the construction bids came in at $1,677,000. So the total cost of this project totally would be $2,089,403. As you can see, this leaves us $350,203 short of the budget. The city does own some property that we acquired. The airport had a runway called Runway 422 that at one time went up to the northeast. The property on the other side, and this is industrial park road, the property on the other side, including where the Options building is right now, and the 17 acres of land that's on the other side of Shelton Street, Shelton Avenue, from Options was at one time airport property. The city several years ago did donate the property that Options is currently located on. We had an appraisal done on the 17 acres of land that's on the north side of Shelton Road, and that appraisal came in at $350,000. So what we are proposing to do is to do an internal borrowing using the capital, excuse me, the sales tax fund account, to borrow from the sales tax fund account to offset the $350,000. Once the sale of that property occurs, which must be used for airport purposes under FAA regulations, we would repay the sales tax fund with the sale of the property. We have had several people that have contacted us when we announced that we would be selling the property, and have indicated to us that they are willing to look at the property. We don't know whether we're going to sell it on sealed bids, or whether we're going to have, actually have an auction on the property, but we could fund the tower this way, in this manner. So we are proposing that we be allowed, the city be allowed to borrow this $350,000. Now, the question is, is why that fund? The auditors, we worked very closely with Larry Francis, we worked with the auditors, we looked at borrowing from perhaps the emergency fund, we have some money in the insurance fund, and the auditors were the ones actually that suggested that because the sales tax fund is actually the fund that's available for general expenditures, that it be that fund that we borrow from. So with that, we would ask the council to give approval to allow us to borrow the $350,000 internally.
Okay. Do we have any council questions on this item?
Mayor, is the $350,000 for all of the properties of just?
It's for 17 acres.
It's for 17 acres?
Yes, sir.
I do have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
If you would explain a little bit, I have had a couple of questions. If you would explain the benefits of doing this for the general public's knowledge, other than what here is rich people with planes? How would it benefit the city? Could you just touch base?
The Air and Trump Tower?
Yes, sir, the tower.
Okay.
Just a little brief.
Yeah.
Because I can't answer the question I've been asking.
Michael Hickson is here. Okay. That he has done airport towers in the past. Perhaps we could call on him for his expertise. You know, I can talk about economic development, because I can assure you that we will be having people that are looking at this area. We've already had one call about the tower. When the tower is installed, we will have companies that come in that will station here. Give you a good example, another example, Shell and Robert, they have people that fly in on a regular basis. The military, who didn't start flying in aircraft, they will not come to an uncontrolled tower. And, you know, I could go on and on. Michael, maybe you could add to this.
Michael, tell us who you are, please.
I'm Michael Hickson.
And the address.
Michael Hickson with Michael Baker Corporation. I am the airport general consultant for airport improvement projects. My home address or work address?
Your office is fine.
Office is 5757 Corporate Boulevard, Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
Okay.
The mayor did a fine job hitting on a lot of the key elements. The one point that, that, you know, that holds dear to a lot of our hearts is that safety. And that's the primary reason the FAA would agree to participate in a control tower at any airport, especially at a general aviation airport. It has to have a very high safety component to even reach the top of the list on a priority program. So you could imagine when you have a number of aircraft in the vicinity of an airport, taking Hammond for example, without a control tower, they're relying on someone in New Orleans to keep the aircraft from colliding. There's no eyes on it. It's all based on dots on a screen. So obviously, when you have a number of aircraft using the same airspace, to have a control tower where you have controls with visual on the aircraft, the chances of midair collision are, I can't say eliminated, but greatly reduced.
Sure.
And, you know, that combined with the economic development, the other key point is there are a number of corporate aircrafts whose own insurance will not allow them to fly their corporate planes into an uncontrolled or a non-towered airport. So you have business opportunities that may get passed by, or you have businesses that are having to fly to New Orleans and drive over, or fly to Baton Rouge and drive over. So there's that cost factor, the time loss factor. So again, safety number one, and I believe it's a distant sector, in my opinion, where you do the economic benefits.
Okay.
But obviously, they're both very important.
Any other questions?
I did have one question, Mr. Mayor. Did we, did we actually, and I think that your explanation was great, and I appreciate you, you know, giving me the information earlier on. Is that a chance to really read it? I thought it was pretty thorough. The only question I did have is do we, do we have an economic development impact dollar figure that we can tag on to, that we can say, hey, this is, this is going to drive X millions of dollars in economic development, anticipating economic development?
It would be pie in the sky, I guess, is quite honestly. We have not.
Do we have any public questions or comments on this item? Airport control tower, does anybody want to speak on this?
Where's it going to be built?
James, at least. At an airport.
It's like, um, the front end.
That's a good answer.
I was just wondering. I think, I think you can help us.
I can help that one. I'm sorry, James.
Your voice.
We did look by lacarettes. It's going to be on the east, I mean, the west side of the airfield, just on the north end of where the end of airport, the entrance to the airport is. So at the airport. Yeah, it will be on the west side of the airfield, right about where the intersection of the runways are, to get the best viewing of each approach as the aircraft are coming in.
We might add, you know, we did have to do a sighting study, and the sighting study cost us some $40,000 to have done, that looked at the angles and everything to select the best sight part of the tower.
During the site selection, we said five possible sites. This was the absolute best with everything. We actually invited the public to come in with any questions. We had some questions there after that meeting, everyone left at least feeling better about this decision to have a tower and the location of it.
The military is going to man and support the tower, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The cooperative development agreement that we have with the Army National Guard is that the city would build the structure, the military would equip it with all the necessary equipment, radios, everything that goes into it, and in the consoles, and then the manning, whether it be contract or internal.
And again, the public benefit, as the councilman said, this won't make it an international or a point of entry.
Correct.
Someone flying a private plane in, or whether, because this is not what this is for.
Correct, that is not, this is strictly for the safety of getting the aircraft in, you know, certain areas and avoiding keeping clearances and everything, and then there's some added benefits as well.
Just out of curiosity, do we get to charge more because you improve the quality of the service at the airport? Just curious, because I'd imagine that having more, more to offer, you can charge a different fee for services there, with that?
The fees for services that we charge are based on property only, demised property, just bare land. I don't think it would really have an impact of the, just the demised property price. That would be up to an appraiser really to determine. I don't think if that's a factor. Now, certain areas, like maybe near the tower, where they become more desired than those pieces of property, may jump in value because of it being there, but not all property together.
Thanks.
Yeah, and we'll see an increase in revenue just from the fuel. We get 10 cents off of every gallon sold, so any aircraft that comes in that normally wouldn't come in, that's a sale right there, so we'll see the revenue from it.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, we're going to move right into the onslaught. This is number three. Number three, an ordinance to change the name of Alabama Street to George Perkins Sr. Drive, approximately 50 feet wide and 1,282 feet in length in its entirety, from the east, starting at JW Davis Drive, running west to Mooney Avenue, as part of the Colonial Place Edition. Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. All the councilmen. It is indeed an honor for me to present this ordinance and evidence for those who are in the audience, and I would like to yield to those who would like to speak on this.
Okay. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Have any input on changing the name from Alabama Street to George Perkins Sr. Drive? Come on up, sir, give us your name and address for the record.
George Perkins Jr., 42279 Mike Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, 7043. I think it's a great thing to us to rename the street from that because he's lived on 101 Alabama Street for over 40 years, and he's been a constant impact on the community of Hammond, Tancow Parish, and surrounding area. He's helped many, many, many people, from the little go to the community, to the poor, to the rich, anybody that need anything. He's constantly had his hand in everything, and I think it'd be an honor to honor him and his memory for his hard work for over 40 years of being in Hammond and doing the things that he did for this community and for this parish and for this surrounding area. He was an impact here, and I think to give, in life you learn, they always told me it was always better to give than to receive. And a lot of times, we have to remember to give back to those that have gave. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
Good evening. Sandra Weary, 102 Roof Drive, Hammond, Louisiana. Although I don't reside in District 3, I'm in District 1, however, from a first, from a personal standpoint, Mr. Perkins was more than a friend, he was a boss, he was a mentor. He just played a vital role in bringing me to the point where I am right now. I also echo the words of his son, George Perkins Jr., and I concur with everything that he said. Mr. Perkins was just so well-known, so accessible to everyone, just made life better for a lot of people, not only on Alabama Street, which will soon be George Perkins Drive, but the city of Hammond, the community, the city of Hammond, and serving as a legislative assistant to Representative Tank Powell, I'd say the state of Louisiana also. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Anyone else? First one there wins.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good evening, councilman, and Mayor Foster. My name is Eloise Perkins. I'm the wife of the deceased George Perkins Sr., and I'd just like to echo what my son, George Junior, said, also, Ms. Weary, in the character of my husband. We've been here, we moved here about 47, 43 years ago, and he was a dedicated man to this city when he moved here. And his work has proven his dedication. He was a member of the council for two terms, he served as president, he worked with the state legislator, he was an outstanding citizen, and I think it would do him great justice and honor to have the street that we've lived on for 43 years to be named after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, here, City Councilman Ellis. I'm here to represent the Technical African Heritage Museum. George was president for quite a minute years, and everything that everyone have stood up here and said is, is true. What I would like to add to that is that as we all endure this life, we should always try to leave something that is better than the way that we found it. I think he done exactly that. With his passing, I think he has left Hammond and a lot of the people's life that he'll touch a lot better than what it was when he found it. So for that, I'm here to represent the Technical African Heritage Museum, Veteran Archives, and both the directors. Thank you.
Sir, would you give us your name, so we can have it for the record, please?
Delmas Adun Sr.
Okay, do we have anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
I am Kelly Perkins Gill, the daughter of George Perkins Sr., and I couldn't be remiss to say that my dad loved Hammond. He loved working for people, he loved giving, and that's what he taught his children and the surrounding communities. He taught people to give, and it was easy to give to him. So, he loved him, and that's all I would say.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Okay, we are on number three. Did I miss? We addressed number one, number two. I didn't miss one. Okay, that's fine. Anyone else want to talk on about Alabama Street? Okay, sir, come on, I believe you want to talk about the airport.
Right.
Okay.
First off.
We need your name and address for the record, sir.
Okay. Bruce Meyer, 524-53 Red Hill Road, Independence, Louisiana. My name is Bruce Meyer. I've been a pilot for 50 years, 45 of which has been out of Hammond Airport. I'm in the arena. I've acquired over 7,000 flying hours, 95% of which were logged right here at the Hammond Airport. I tell you this not from a standpoint of tooting my horn, but just to let you know where I'm coming from. I previously heard that military planes don't land at the Hammond Airport. They land at Top Gun, I know that for sure, Navy planes. If somebody wants to get here, they could land at New Orleans and Baton Rouge, and I'm sure the Tancow Parish Industrial Board Chairman would pick them up, or they could rent a car, and they'd be here in no time. So I know of no insurance company that prevents planes from landing without a control tower. Let me tell you how we operate at Hammond Airport. We presently use an air-to-air frequency of 122.7. You get about 10 miles out approaching the airport, you monitor that frequency, you can hear what anybody's doing. If, if there's any planes in the area landing at there, you can determine their position and their intentions, they announce that. And then shortly after that, you announce your position and intentions. And sometimes you have to call another airplane to verify or upgrade his position. Sometimes you have to slow down or extend the leg in a pattern, and that's no problem, that's just common pilot courtesy. Sometimes jets or helicopters are involved, but this presents no problem whatsoever. This is a safe and efficient method of traffic control, considering the low amount of volume, the small volume we have at the Hammond Airport. I maintain that you have a problem, you address it. However, I see no problem in this area. Presently, the airport has no scheduled flight or passenger carrier, and there's been no collisions or close calls. Many airports use the same method of traffic control, and it doesn't cost the taxpayer one thing. Now, a nearly $2 billion control tower is being proposed, that can basically do the same thing that we are presently doing ourselves, except that with a tower, a negative safety factor is introduced, as the controller has been known to cause a collision or near death on the ground or in the air. Albeit, this is rare, but nevertheless has happened before on more than one occasion. I've asked proponents to the tower, why are we building a tower? Some of the comments I received are vague, generatic, generatic answers, well, it'll bring more money to the city of Hammond. Really, just how this will be accomplished is a mystery to me. Strangely, safety isn't mentioned at all, but I thought the safety was the primary reason for a tower to be built in the first place. If I thought that a tower at this time would improve safety, I'd be 100% for it. In the initial phase of the proposed tower, its cost was touted as not costing the citizens of Hammond one, excuse me, my mouth's getting, one thing down. Now we find out that this is not the case. Gentlemen of the council, I strongly urge you to reject or postpone the ordinance containing the borrowing of funds to fund a traffic control tower, which is nothing more than a feel-good project. That board is only nothing more than an earmark. And speaking of earmarks, prior to sequestration, there were some 200 towers nationwide scheduled for closure, 200 towers that the FAA had funded and thought were needed. Incidentally, I've been told by both an airport authority board member and an FAA employee that there's no need for a tower. Of course, they didn't need to tell me, as I already knew. Why is this country $16.7 trillion in red? Is it partially because of projects such as this? Are we part of the problem? Thank you for the opportunity to... Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Now, just respond real quickly, please. I appreciate Mr. Myrick's feelings about the debt of the country. I will point out that the FAA believes in this project, they put in eight-hundred thousand dollars. State Louisiana believes in this project, they put in seven-hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The US, uh, excuse me, the Army National Guard believes in this project, because overall they're going to be putting in millions of dollars. So, they have a belief that it is desperately needed. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move right into our regular scheduled meeting for October fifteenth, two-thousand thirteen. Go call, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Yeah.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
All right, Mr. Gill, would you, would you lead us in a prayer, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come this morning, this afternoon, to thank you, to praise you and glorify your name. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity for us to be together right now, bringing these issues to the board. We ask you, Heavenly Father, that you, you Heavenly Father, use your wisdom and your courage and your understanding, Heavenly Father, to touch the people's heart, Heavenly Father, here at the board, Lord, because we know, God, it is you and your ultimate decision. And, Lord, we thank you and praise you, Heavenly Father, for everyone that was able to attend, and we give you all praise and glory. In your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under one God, in the physical with everything and justice for all.
All right, do we have any council reports?
I did one, one update for the council, just, I wanted to bring everybody up to speed on, on the after-school alliance. We, we had a great meeting on last Thursday, and we had over fifty participants to come to a master plan session. Mayor Foster stayed for almost the entire event, and we were all extremely appreciative of the mayor for being there for the entire workshop. And we had visitors from, from the National League of Cities that came in, we had visitors from the Louisiana Center for After-School Learning. We had lots of stakeholders present, and I thought we accomplished a lot of work to come up with, ultimately will become a master plan we will use for the implementation at some point of, of a, a sustainable plan for after-school initiatives. And I, I think that committee now, that council's now going to be called the Hammond Youth Education Alliance, and we have selected or elected some officers. Annette Corrello is going to be the president, Tina Roper is the vice president, Betty Lee is the secretary, and those are the three officers we have so far, and then we have a pretty sizable board that's going to lead that project. So, at some point, I would like to bring it to the council so we can talk about how that all works together and what the council could do to help support that initiative. But I think we're making a lot of progress. I think we had an article in the newspaper on last Friday, was very comprehensive and it covered a lot of good details of what we're doing, but I think long-term, that's going to become a big, a big part of our community, so just wanted to update the council on that.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other council report? Okay, Mayor, you have a report for us, sir?
The only report I have is that the House Hall Recycling Day, everybody can put this on their calendar, is Saturday, October twenty-sixth. That's before the next council meeting, so if anybody has any recyclables, this is twice a year, so it'll be October twenty-sixth. Thank you.
October twenty-sixth. At a time, sir, just for the public?
Eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve. Okay. Are there any new businesses in the audience that'd like to be recognized? Okay, we're going to move right into new business resolutions, number one.
Minutes.
I'm sorry. For the minutes.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, now, number one, a resolution approving of change order number three, final on drainage improvements fiscal year two thousand thirteen, project number four twenty dash eleven two oh eight, with forty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-six cents extra, Rook Cane's additional pipeline.
You should add the cycling. Change order number three, a lot of items on it. If you recall, back in June, y'all, there was money transferred to this project from the North Oak Street Improvements Project, and there was never a change order done, so this is still under that number. This is just a final change order adjusting all the quantities, the biggest number being that lining item. We recommend approval in the amount of forty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-six cents increased in the contract. Any questions?
I'm sure Councilman Ross will answer.
I have no questions at all, Mr. President.
Man, who cares on their agenda?
No, no questions at all, Mr. President. I'm all for it.
Not a question?
Motion, motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, number two, a resolution accepting of work is substantially complete on drainage improvements fiscal year two thousand thirteen, project number four twenty dash eleven two oh eight, commenced in a forty-five day lean period with only five percent retention.
Same project, now that we've done the final change order, go ahead and accept the job as substantially complete.
No further questions. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution to ratify an award bid received October eleventh, two thousand thirteen, for sewer rehabilitation infiltration inflow repairs, L A D E Q, C W S R F, twenty-two seventeen forty-one dash one, dash zero one, project number six one six dash thirty-one four oh one. Miss Danz.
Yes, we did receive bids, and they, and they did come in within the budget, but we're still waiting on state approval, so we're going to recommend tabling until the meeting November fifth. We'll still stay on schedule. If we, if we award them.
Motion to table?
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion to table approved.
Thank you, Bill. Number four, resolution authorizing renewal of all existing businesses high and/or low alcohol permit in the city of Hammond for the calendar year two thousand fourteen.
I'm not Jenny Wilson.
Yes, sir.
Jenny took the day off today, well deserved. I think you all had received a listing of all of the renewals. One of the things I did want to point out is we did get a police run on whether or not there were any issues on any of these establishments that were serving alcohol. In, in this calendar year, we only had two issues of sales to underage minors. We thought that was very good compared to what we had last year, and although you have one, one incident, that's not good, but as compared to last year, we did extremely well. There are two licenses that Jenny is not recommending for approval, and that is Whiskey Bin. Whiskey Bin is actually going to close because of the state buyout of the property for the future roundabout. She's also recommending to not approve Chucky Seafood and Oyster Bar, because they're going to be moving outside of the city limits on October thirty-first. Other than those two, Jenny does recommend approval of all of the licenses.
Okay. Do we need to... You would need to add that to, that would be part of the stipulation, just word those two.
I'll make a motion to renew all alcohol licenses except for Chucky's.
And...
Year two thousand fourteen.
And Whiskey Bin?
Whiskey Bin and the original Chucky's.
Yes, and Whiskey Bin, thank you.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, number five, a resolution to authorize Shane's Rib Shack located at six-ten Palace Drive to get a high and low alcohol permit for two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen. The owner of the business is Ports Up Hammond LLC.
Jenny has indicated to me that all of the paperwork is in order for retail beer and liquor permit. The person representing the LLC is Rex Marino, and it's my understanding that Mr. Marino is here tonight.
Come on up, Rex. Mr. Marino, I'm sorry. Would you give her the address?
Yes, my address is fourteen Pony Lane, St. Rose, Louisiana, seven zero zero eight seven, for the time being.
Mr. Marino, we ask everybody that comes to, to request to receive a new alcohol license from the city of Hammond, we ask a representative to come, as you just heard the mayor mention, the police, the chief police gives us a report of who sells to underage minors. We take that very seriously in the city of Hammond. I assure you, he will, he will send somebody to come check you. We, we ask you, a representative to come to let you know, make sure you receive a copy of the ordinance, you're aware of our laws in the city of Hammond and outside of the state laws, and just to let you know, we do mean business, we don't want our, our minors getting served alcohol at any establishment.
For the record, this is our second rib shack that we actually opened up in the state of Louisiana. We do have a high and low liquor license at our, our other rib shack, and was never ever cited for any kind of violation.
Yes, sir.
To do anything with liquor. Okay. Be on it.
All right. It's clear to the council.
Motion approved. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good luck to you.
When are you opening? When are you guys opening?
Um, right now, it's looking like the November eighth.
Number six. A resolution authorizing family night with the Great Pumpkin, a waiver of the city of Hammond open container law for October thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, within the boundaries of the Kitter Parking Mall and half of the Casa de Fresa and between West Charles, Northwest Railroad Avenue, and Cape Street from the hours of four P M. to ten P M. Miss Jane.
Hi, Jason. Jane Bresker, representing the Great Pumpkin Event at Lockerhead Restaurants, one-ten North Cape Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven oh four oh one. We're, we're trying to do something that could become a Hammond tradition with this family night with the Great Pumpkin, and we would consider asking for all of Casa de Fresa, and that hero was with us yesterday and is bringing a lot of, really, a nice equipment from the children's museum, and we just thought it would be safer and easier to keep an eye on it with everyone at the restaurant looking straight at what's going on. So, I have that request before the mayor, but either way, it looks like a lot of people are very excited in the community for this event to happen, so this is just a, this is just sort of a formality to make it comfortable for everyone to walk around and have a good time.
Any questions? Ms. Louise. She wants to know, are you going to stop construction on an airport tower open by Lockerhead?
I was going to confirm the location. My name is Spastig at one-twelve Allen Drive. I just wonder if this is a strange thing, that you have a children's project and you are also requesting that adults be able to walk around in that area, who may be partly impaired by their carrying those drinks within that area. Do you not see that this is a possible, a strange combined request?
No, and that, we just want to make it comfortable for our, our customers to have dinner and then take whatever's left over from their meal and go out with their kids, or the event is over at eight o'clock, so it's from four to eight, which is fairly early. So, we're planning on doing most of our cleanup. If anyone is going to become inebriated, even with a single deviant events that I've seen, it's usually between eight-thirty and ten, or nine and ten. So, if someone wants to walk around with a beverage, we're just making it comfortable so we don't have to stand at the door of the restaurant, saying, "Sorry, you can do that." When there's going to be something so close.
Certainly, I'm just seeing your reasoning. I just thought combined that with the children's event seems a little strange to me.
Because I'm actually doing both. It's just making it easier.
My question has been asked.
Any other questions, Tom?
I do kind of agree with Mr. Louise, I mean, it would be nice, if it's, if it's a family event, then maybe we should exclude the alcohol.
Well, there isn't going to be...
You know, I always support Lockerhead in total, you know, but it does, yeah, I don't...
It's up to you guys. I mean, we're not planning on selling anything outside of the restaurant, it's just mostly for our patrons to come and be able to walk off with it, without us having to, you know...
Maybe, in my opinion, maybe better for Lockerhead to say, you know what, this is a child's event, we're not going to allow any alcohol around the children or the events or the exhibits, and I think you guys, you looked at it in a, in a positive light.
Okay.
And again, I always support the guys.
Right.
I'm just, I do have a little bit of an issue, it's supposed to be a family event.
Sure.
Maybe, maybe we can separate it. I think, I think it's a positive.
Okay.
Turn it into a positive. It's just my thoughts.
I'm sorry, Bobby, have you had a comment? With my disloyal, I would see any testification for alcohol with children.
I understand.
Well, not, not to, not to be devil's advocate, but I'm just going to make a comment, just for council, just be mindful that we, year after year, endorse and support the Holy Ghost Fair, where we give them alcohol permit to sell alcohol at the school, right, on the property, which is no different than I think in this case. So, if we set a precedence on, on these events, we need to make sure that we're mindful that that could affect other events in the future, and the Holy Ghost Fair has always have sold beer. I mean, the first year I came to Hammond, I went to the fair, I didn't want to go, and I was there selling beer, and I, I stayed. So, you know, I'm trying to make a point, and I stayed, and I enjoyed the beer at the fair, and so...
Well, we don't...
Just want to make that point.
We don't plan on having, we don't plan on having anyone, you know, being served out there, it's just that we're going to be having music on the patio that night, it's a big draw for a lot of our customers, and if it gets really crowded and stuff like that, and they're off the patio, we're just trying to keep everything legal, especially with the new A T C rules and permits about if they come and monitor something that's new or a new event. But I'm willing to, whatever you guys decide is fine with us, we have no problem.
People have it out under control.
I'm sorry?
People have it out under control.
Well, you know, for the safety of the children, I think you're absolutely right, and we were keeping, trying to keep it kind of sequestered on the side anyway, so that really wasn't a mix-over. It's just that someone else had suggested we bring it closer so we can keep a better eye on it, so it can go either way, I'm very flexible.
Normally, when, when y'all do events at Lockerhead, which I think y'all do a very good job of, I've never heard of any trouble with them, y'all normally have an officer. Do you intend to do that for this event also, or have y'all even discussed?
Yes, several.
Okay.
One of the things we're really looking at is lighting, and where we're going to have the outdoor restrooms, things like that. Another reason for having it closer to the restaurant is that the girls can go inside, and we can make the outside restrooms for the boys, so that it's easier for them. We're trying to have things that will be easy for the kids in costume to do, but the proximity to us is that we feel that we can make it a safer event, and if there's people walking back and forth and going all across the street and doing things, it just makes sense that we want everyone to feel comfortable. It doesn't mean that we're going to be, you know... know, packing a beer truck up and drawing drunks.
But you did, you did tell me you're going to have an officer there.
Actually, several.
Okay.
And then we have volunteers from the schools and people that are coming.
All right, Ms. Jane, so not to be hypocritical, because I've always supported Holy Ghost, and I support you guys, and I'm going to, I'm going to go along with this because I believe that y'all are going to do it correctly, and Councilman Marshall is right, we haven't ever had any problems at Lockerred, so I think you may answer my question.
I'm personally going to be there just to make sure, and in the places that need lights and need anything, we're going to make sure it's covered.
I've been through the doubts, so motion to approve.
Second?
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
No.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
All right, Jane.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay. Number seven, resolution to accept bid of Spartan Construction Company in the amount of $1,677,000 for the airport control tower project at the Hammond North Shore Regional Airport, subject to the authorization of borrowing funds from the sales tax fund number 203-95,000-590185, and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents related thereto. My word. Do we have any questions for Mr. Hickson? I know we've talked about this numerous times, we're all familiar with the project at the tower, are there any specific questions as to the budget of the tower, maybe, for Mr. Hickson?
I know.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second? Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Final adoption of ordinance, we have an old business, final adoption of an ordinance to approve the rezoning request by Lloyd Andron Jr. and Laura E. San Filippo Adel to rezone the most easterly portion of lots 6, 7, and 8, block 3 of the Oak Ridge Edition, approximately 300 feet plus or minus from R4 to C3, located at 923, 925, and 927 South Morrison Boulevard, RZ 2013-8-1, failure of a majority vote by the zoning commission. Mr. Nash?
Good evening, Councilman.
Good afternoon.
I have pinch hitting for Josh Taylor. This was tabled at the last meeting, we had the request of the neighbors and the property owner to maybe work out a more amicable situation for them, so, but unless there's someone here to talk about it, you know, it really, it is what it is, and it stands.
Okay. We will take people that, I want to speak about this item, please. Okay. One at a time, please, sir. Ms. Lee? Give us your name and...
Good evening, Jennifer Lee, Masailan Ross, and tonight I'm here representing Ms. Lilian Cox and several family, she's a family member of several residents of Mississippi Street. She's also the great granddaughter of Hattie Hart Lovett, and that family, you may know, is the family that Lovett Street is named after. And I'm here tonight to express our concerns about the rezoning requests, specifically the Lovett families and their descendants have been living in this area for generations, and they originally were forming the land, but now they're still living there and they are expressing great concern about the rezoning request. Just last night, Ms. Cassania Davis had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Andron, and I also had the opportunity to speak with him this evening, Mr. Andron and his council, and we're very optimistic that we can come to an agreement between the parties, and we just need some more time to discuss that. So, we would request that this be tabled, we're requesting 160 days so that we, we can further research this and some title issues. Mr. Andron has expressed concerns about that time period, and I can speak to that.
You know, I would like a shorter time period, but I mean, I'm willing to accommodate, you know, that, because I have a lot, I have, I'm trying to market the property, and I have people that are interested that want to do things there, one in particular a nursery, and I don't want to lose them, but I'm, I'm trying to be conciliatory in this and work with my neighbors so that we can resolve everything, which I think we can, so I'm willing to go along with everyone and what they want to do, and I'm okay with that.
Mr. Blunt?
Go ahead, can I make an observation? And this is a concern I have, Mr. President, I think we got to really think about that because this zoning issue, not zoning issue, but the property ownership issue, did you mention, there's still some discussion around that, and last, the last council meeting, I mentioned to Josh that there was some discrepancy in ownership of the property, and that, that someone owned property on the other side of Lovett, and, and I still believe that that's a zoning issue that has to be resolved at that point, and I wish that we would get that issue resolved because there's, there's some really debates on who owns, how far the property goes, and I think that's going to be the research that you guys are going to do, and then if that happens, then does that change the zoning board's recommendation to us? That's just a question I want you to think about, because, you know, that's, that's a real issue. Does that make sense?
Well, initially, if I may speak, initially what we were asking for is that on the three lots that we have, the commercial goes back 300 feet, but every lot facing south on 51, as far as you can see, to all the way to I-10 goes back 500 feet, so what we were trying to do was get an additional 200 feet, the same as everything's had, that's all. But we're trying to work something out with them and resolve the thing, I think we can do that, so we're just asking for more time.
And so we're talking about 160 days, give or take, is that what I'm understanding, Jane?
We are requesting 160 days just to continue our discussions, but also to conduct some title research and do that, we understand Mr. Andron's point about, you know, it's basically taking property out of common.
Right, that's right.
So we're working to, I'm working with Mr. Andron's council to resolve this as quickly as possible, I know that our clients are working also, and we need Mr. Andron to do that as quickly as they can, we're just mindful of the holidays that are upcoming and the time that that may take, so...
Well, here's, here's an idea, to, in order, in order not to table this for 160 days, I see no need to table it that long, what we can do is move the item from the agenda in the event that it changes the situation, Councilman Marshall, then at that point, it possibly could go back to the zoning board, and that will satisfy your concern, or if it stays the same and they work something out, it can come back on the agenda with minor changes. It really doesn't change anything, it's a lot of paperwork for Whitney, ma'am, to keep carrying it over for 160 days, so we'll just pull it off, pull it off the agenda, and if y'all work things out and it stays similar, we'll just put it back on the agenda. It's more of a paperwork situation than anything.
He won't be able to do anything.
He won't be able to do anything.
You won't be able to do anything until we...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And also...
Ma'am, come on up, please, and we're going to need your name and address for the record, Councilman.
My name is Cassania Davis, I'm on the corner of Mississippi Street, 701 Mississippi Street.
Yes, ma'am.
Just like Mr. Marshall said about the property, Mr. Weber is here again, and I just wanted to give him an opportunity to speak, that he's on the end of Lovett Street, and when we were at the zoning committee meeting, he kept saying that he owned a piece of the property behind ours.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, in trying to prepare and determine our property line, I went back to Mr. Weber, and he indeed does own some property on that side, and I'd also like to give him an opportunity to express his concerns as a neighbor and as a property owner, that of course, progress is imminent, so maybe Mr. Lloyd's going to come a little bit this way, maybe later on, five years from now, he may come a little farther this way, maybe we might be in the wide Lovett Street.
Well, let me suggest this, not to not listen to the gentleman...
Sure.
But we, if this possibly won't, won't be an issue for maybe up to 160 days, he would have to come repeat the whole process again.
Thanks.
So why don't we wait until it comes back up, sir? Not, not that we're not interested in what you have to say, but getting old, I might forget. So I, I would, I would think it would be fresh in our mind when the situation comes back up again, and it will be discussed, it will go through another public hearing, there'll be an opportunity to speak, and then that would be the appropriate time to voice your concerns about this also.
So...
Does that make sense?
I'm not quite sure about one other thing.
Sure.
I want to understand what Mr. Marshall is saying about possibly going back to the rezoning committee? What, what does that mean exactly?
What he, what he suggested, if you don't mind me speaking...
Go ahead, yes.
Is, is that if, if you change your, your arrangement, if he, if he changes his request significantly, and you're satisfied with it, there is a planning and zoning board, and he, he believes that they're there for a reason, we all believe that, but he, his point is that they're there for a reason, so they should rehear this, the new situation between, or new agreement, possible new agreement between you and Mr. Andron, and would that change their opinion of how they feel about it, how they recommend it to us? It doesn't matter if they recommend it to us as approval, he, he still has the right as a councilman to say, "I don't agree with this, and I'm not going to vote for it," doesn't necessarily mean that that makes his mind up for him or anybody else.
Okay.
It's just a recommendation.
So it would go back to them to, again, possibly come back to you.
Possibly, but, but maybe not, it just depends on how much y'all, y'all change your agreement.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay.
All right, so what we would need is a motion to remove item number... I will...
All motions to table.
Okay, and then...
I'll make a motion to remove number 1 under old business.
Number 1 under old business. Second?
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion to remove item number 1?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, number 1, final adoption of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 10-5197, city statute establishing certain requirements for the discharge of wastewater in the city of Hammond.
Motion to approve. Second?
Vote, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 2, final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the borrowing of funds from the sales tax fund number 203-95,000-590185, in the amount not to exceed $350,000 for the airport control tower project at the Hammond North Shore Regional Airport.
Motion to approve. Second?
Vote, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 3, final adoption of an ordinance to change the name of Alabama Street to George Perkins Senior Drive, approximately 50 feet wide and 1,282 feet in length in its entirety from the east, starting at J.W. Davis Drive, running west to Mooney Avenue, as part of the Colonial Place Edition.
Second?
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction of ordinance in set public hearing. Number 1, introduction of an ordinance, of ordinance, FD, SDF 2009-8-1, major subdivision request by Alac Properties LLC, Greg Alac, to amend ordinance number 12-5283, approving Alac Business Park subdivisions to extend deadline to, to cul-de-sac, construct cul-de-sac on Arkway and accept revised performance bond in the amount of $69,500 for construction of the cul-de-sac located at 17420 Highway 190 East, Zone C3.
Councilman, this is, request is to extend that ordinance for another additional year and to keep in place the $69,500 bond.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Vote, please.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for November 5th, 2013.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?